...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do I hear approval for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated June 26, 2023?
So move.
Have a motion and second any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. This time we'll recognize visitors and citizens with any grievances or praises. We are doing something a little bit different, we're just adopting what other cities are doing. We're limiting to one appearance per topic with a three-minute limit. Anybody like to approach? Communications for the mayor, I don't have a lot, I know this getting kind of winding down the summer, summer months and school started today or for the county and the city I think is going to start next week or later this week, Thursday, right? And just be careful with the kiddos, they're going to be out and not looking where they're going, so hopefully you have a very successful school year. Under community reports, city school board report, Kelly's not here, Scott, do you have an amendment or anything?
No sir.
So why are you here for?
Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Vice Mayor Ginn.
Oh, let me find it here. I love taking all these cameras. It is. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on July the 10th. One item of business, applicant Brandy Addington requesting interpretation of the use to allow an indoor hemp growing facility for property located at 980 Sinking Springs Road. Property is zone B2. This was just trying to get a feel of the land, no action taken at the time, but it was the feeling of the BZA at that time that opening a hemp growing facility up in a B2 zone would open up a lot of doors that we're not quite ready to open up yet. And we're looking at consideration of making that type of activity under M1 rather than B2. So again, there was no action taken, but we kind of indicated to her we wanted to take a second look at that and perhaps change the zoning guidelines on hemp growing facilities. So again, no action taken in that particular case. The Planning Commission also met that night, very lively meeting, probably I could say. John and Kim Mall requesting preliminary site plan review for property located at Charles Seavers Boulevard. Property is on B2. This was zone B2 some time ago with the idea that there was going to be a commercial type of business put in there. At this time she was looking to put in an RV recreational vehicle park with about 75 slots. And there was a large number of citizens who expressed their disapproval of that particular thing. We are kind of, as in we frequently run into, we're kind of in a situation where our hands are tied to some extent because this is something that we need to reevaluate and check up on and see what we can do. You know, times change and sometimes as we're aware, our zoning ordinances and such have not kept up with that. So based upon that, we, she was asking for, you know, an idea of how it felt and generally we told her there would be little support for it among the planning commission. Roger, you-
And just FYI, the deadline for the August submittal was today at 4:30 and they did not submit plans for that RV park today, for the August meeting.
But that is something, I think there were some issues about where there are vehicles that have overstayed their limit according to our zoning ordinances and a number of other things, but generally speaking, at least this is on hold for right now if not for a longer period of time. Secondly, applicant Savannah Pies requesting final plat review and approval for property located at 107 Highland Avenue. This was a redivision and it was approved by the PCA or the Plan Commission. And applicant David Harbin requesting final plat review and approval for property located at 223 Edgewood Avenue. This was a plat revision and it was approved. Applicant Carl McMurray requesting final plat review and approval for property located at Skyline Drive. Again, a minor plat review and I might mention, if you look at later on down in the notes, we're looking at streamlining some of the processes. We seem to have an awful lot of these every month and codes enforcement and some of them are going to be able to take some of this out of the hands of the planning commission because it's primarily just a transactional thing in most cases anyway and they're far better trained to make these decisions than we are. So all of these were approved without any problems, subject to some, you know, I think there were some signatures and some stamps and such that had to be met, but in the future you probably won't be seeing as much of that. And then finally Bruce Knatzser requesting a road approval of joint permanent easement for property located on Hickory Lane, property zone R1. This was handled in connection with the town attorney and I think a great deal of discussion with the city and everything and it was determined that this was probably appropriate and we would approve that. Also, there were several other items of discussion, some of which I've touched on. We're going to update the city with the fee administration and how we're going to be doing that. We're going to be amending the zoning and subdivision checklist. Staff is going to do more of the review of minor plats. We're going to try to move up some dates to try to keep things from being ninth, you know, 11th hour revisions, which puts a tremendous amount of pressure on our staff. Discussion of incomplete discussions and there's also a discussion, if not a decision by the PC, to put a moratorium at this point on any discussions by the planning commission on RV sites, mobile home sites, tiny home sites. Our regulations and everything are totally out of whack on that, we need to get these updated and get our hands are on it and get everything wrapped up before we have another situation where somebody comes in and wants an RV per bed. So we're kind of putting a moratorium on that and say, wait till we get everything sorted out and then we'll talk about it. Any questions?
Any questions for Vice Mayor Ginn?
Larry, I was at the lively meeting and y'all did a really good job, I thought. And just as suggestions, I don't know when y'all are considering these things, but it seems like B2 is a pretty broad bucket. I think you can have a church, a restaurant and a, you know, a retail establishment and a trailer park, you know, maybe that needs to be teased out if we can.
That's one of the flaws that we got into. It was indicated to us that there would be a commercial establishment when we rezoned that to B2. And there was no commercial establishment, it became an RV park.
Can that be required to be a part of the request to rezone it? I mean-
Well, I think you-
Can it all be?
I think you run into legal issues if you do that.
Well, I think that was some of the discussion we had, that maybe before we do a rezoning, we ask the requesting party to give us an intent. Now, they could change that, but I think that would still, you know, possibly give us some legal stance possibly, but I think that's not out of the question, that we could ask them for their intent before we rezon it.
Well, that's kind of what we did this time though too. It was a different story.
To me, if they're not required to present plans, then it's kind of Russian roulette. They can say they're going to do X, then they can switch it to Y. I mean, it seems like there ought to be-
To play devil's advocate though on that Rob is if they say, if it's under that zoning, they have every legal right to do that. We have to be more proactive.
But they are specifically asking to change the zoning.
Yeah, they asked to change it. It wasn't like that.
If they're specifically asking to change this partial zone, then can we not specifically ask why?
Well, the process is if it's adjoining that zone, then they have, and I might be wrong because I'm not a law report, they have every legal right to have that zoning changed if you're touching it. But I might be wrong. One thing I want to read, I think we brought it up a couple of months ago, staff's about to be completing with their codification and the code is going to be a separate entity on that. So what I'd like to do for the planning commission, we talked about it a little bit, is take a section, break it down over, it could be a year, and we kind of, and have staff kind of give us the recommendations and we kind of give our recommendations, then we bring it to council, I would think to get input there, and we'll just try to catch all these things that we haven't really been able to catch. We always catch it on the back end, don't catch it on the front end. So hopefully we'll get going on that and hopefully sometime this year.
One more question for Larry. I drove through the existing trailer park franks, I understand that's Grandfathered Inn, but there's more RVs in there than there are trailers. Is that Grandfathered Inn as a trailer park or an RV park?
It's not Grandfathered Inn, it's a non-conforming use because it was there when the city annexed it. So that's why it's there. If it ever ceased to exist at its current use, then it'll go away.
Well, at the meeting someone brought up with an RV, they can only be there for 30 days and they have to move, so it doesn't apply to franks.
That does not apply right now because it was there when we annexed it. Correct.
And just to be upfront, it had been indicated to us that that would be phasing out of time. We've seen, I think, three different plans on that particular property and what they plan to do. And so we're keeping an eye on it. And I also understand, I think codes is, as a result of some of the discussion that came out of that meeting, I think codes has taken a second look because I think there were some strong indications that there may have been some codes violations. Thank you.
Yes, there has been and they have been taking, or they have been cited on those. Couple of things, Planning Commission is doing a workshop at 5 o'clock before their August 14th meeting and they would like to invite council to attend it to discuss some of these matters.
5:00 PM?
5:00 PM on the 14th. Second, mayor brought up the code book, we will be trying to bring it to the next meeting, we have received it. We're trying to put together a summary list for council on some of the things that have changed, we'll try to get you all at least a week or two in advance, so you all can look over those. If you have any questions, you can call myself or staff before the meeting, so we can try to answer those.
Any other questions for Larry?
Let me go ahead and hit Green McAdoo one moment. You may have seen the advertisements, you may not. Green McAdoo is sponsoring a Green Thai banquet on August the 24th. This is a fundraiser for the Eugene Galahad Memorial Scholarship Fund. Going to be a good meal, as you could well imagine, good music, again, as you could well imagine, and cost is $50 a ticket, if you want a table, is $400 and that's the 24th of August. It's on the Green McAdoo website or I'm sure Adam would be glad to take your money at Green McAdoo. Thank you.
Thanks Larry. Clinton Utility Board Report, Councilman McBride.
Clinton Utility Board met July 13th. You see the CUB summary report in your packet, nothing really to add to that. Stephen McNally was, I guess, sworn in as a new CUB member that evening. I was not there, I was out of town, but nothing that I know of unusual at that meeting.
Great. Any questions for Jim?
Councilman McBride, is TVA or CUB making any provisions to prevent what we had last year with rollover blackouts and everything?
I mean, TVA's working, apparently, I think they got kind of caught on that. CUB did a good job with that. CUB, I've always said, had a good program and CUB has the ability to shave power and they knew that that was coming. And, but yes, I do think, and I've actually read, there's been articles in the Sentinel. I mean, in my opinion, it's a shame that the TVA executive gets paid the amount of money he gets paid, which I think is criminal personally, but then to have such poor service with that, but yeah, that shouldn't, I don't think that'll happen again. And CUB's been kind of a, I think, pretty much a poster child for TVA as to how that should work and should operate.
I'd noticed several area utility boards have gotten copped in the last month here with blackouts. Due to overloads.
And then the thing that happened, like in particular, one of the things that CUB has the ability to do, CUB can turn off a particular grid or a particular area of town and then in 30 minutes they can bring it back up, all this done remotely. Like for instance, in Memphis, I think they talked about, all that has to be done manual. So you've got to send the truck to this part of the city and you've got to cut these people off, then you've got to go over here and you've got to cut these people off. And when it happens and it's so cold, that 20 minutes turns into an hour and then everybody's heat pump comes on at the same time. So they're unable, it's just like being at the house and you've got the hairdryer, curling iron, the straightener, the microwave and the oven all going on the same circuit. So yeah, but TVA has gotten a lot of flack from that. I know Tim, what's the representative in Knoxville?
Burge.
Tim Burge, I mean, he's been all over them.
And UFOs?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe that's what's causing the power outage.
Yeah, it could be.
Maybe? Anything else?
Conspiracy theory.
All right. Catherine, do you have some things? If it a heartbeat, can we?
Good evening. I just want to start by thanking the city for their partnership on Sip of Summer Fest on Friday. It was absolutely the hottest day of the year on the parking lot, but thank you for all the ways that the city contributes to our events and our programs. We could not do it without that help, so thank you. Excuse me. Last month I gave you some photos of our banners, they're actually finished and should be going up early September. There was 60 different banners that we'll be able to put up on lampposts in the historic district and they will each have a different historical photo. So Joey and I, along with another board member, Todd Temple, we're working on a new website that will highlight information about each historical photo along with the walking tour. We're about to add some more signs to our walking tour, so we'll have a total of 36 markers. And all of these markers have been placed on the National Historic Marker Registry, so I'm pretty excited about that. As we keep having these events in our green space that we had, I think you all know that we want to put a pavilion there one day. Our board has decided that we don't love calling it the green space or the Commerce Street parking lot anymore, so we would like to call it Pearl Place. That's something that I'm just mentioning to you now, it's city property, so I would just ask that maybe next month or in the months to follow, if that would be something that you guys could vote on, if that's something appropriate that we could call it that. With nothing in Clinton being called a pearl, we want to make sure that that history is continued and taught throughout, so we would put a marker out there and some information with that as well. I gave you guys some information as we're going into a new cycle of our budget and our promotions. I wanted to recap what we did last year for our promotion budget, so you'll see, I kind of laid it all out for you. And this is really just an overall picture. I sent Chris and Roger and the mayor a very detailed Excel spreadsheet on every penny that we spent on promotion, so if you want that information, you can get that from them. But what we, but I kind of hit the highlights on most of the things. So the VMP Knoxville spread that we did was $2,500. That hits seven surrounding counties, 304 businesses, period, and they have, they report about 65,000 readers per issue. So you can see on all of this information, they have 64% of their readers are inspired to take action. It explains what action looks like, it explains what their readership is, you know, male, female, household income range, who's reading it. So that was really intentional, something that we did that was quantifiable, something that we could look at those numbers and see exactly how many people we were reaching with that. The same is true for the digital billboard, we did that for all of our events, so a weekly impression is 95,789. We did that four times, so you get the picture with that. While we did lots of visual, we also went with an audio telling people about Clinton. So we did the Wolf commercials, so again, you can read about that. The Busy Bee Trader Magazine, they have 48,000 magazines distributed all the way through our Facebook posts. So this is what we spent our money on last year. We had a total promotional spending of 13,483, so you'll see that we exceeded the 10,000 that was given to us. And as we move forward, actually, I think we spent very minimal on our Facebook boosts and social media posts, so that's something we'll probably in the future look forward to spending more on there. But I did put in there some of our organic posts because while it was our April Fool's Day joke, a reach of 79,576 people without spending a dime was pretty significant. So you'll see some of the other things that we spent money on. I'm also constantly writing press releases and reaching out to WBIR, WATE. We did a segment on WATE last week, they came out and talked about Sip of Summer Fest and also our installation that will be going in soon. And just to give you an idea, WBIR's YouTube page has 94,700 followers, so when we get that free segment, that's a pretty significant reach as well, so. And then the other information that I gave you, we got this rendering from our artist for the art installation that we'll be putting in in Terrapin Hill. There's a colored version on the back, which I think is really neat also, but that's also something that we're looking to install by the end of the year. One of the things I wanted to point out, he is very interested, because this was such a student-led initiative, he really wants us to reach out to the students from South Clinton Elementary and those sixth graders, our high school students that we're working with on our youth board, and possibly some leaders in the community as well, to do sketches that would go inside the turtle shell, so that would be a neat mark that they would be leaving on their town forever, so that's my report.
Any questions for Catherine?
Catherine, you might share with the council who's doing this, the gentleman who's doing this and kind of his background.
Okay, yeah, his name is Brian Somerville. So the money that came for the art installation came from the National Association of Realtors. They suggested, Brian, he's out of Nashville, he kind of took and ran with the idea and the concept and was in our budget as well, so.
I saw, I heard the advertisement on Wolf, yeah, and I saw the billboard on Clinton around Sawway.
Sawway.
It looked good, it sounded good. Anything else? Thanks Catherine.
Thank you.
General Government Report, Mr. Howe.
Mayor, just a couple of updates on some of the projects. We got the notice to proceed a couple of weeks ago on the JC Park Splash Pad Pool Project. We met last week, put a timetable together, the advertisements will go out later this week. We got a pre-construction meeting set for next week. I think we got bid openings set for August 31st, so we hope to probably ask you all to have a special call meeting sometime around the second week of September, go ahead and get the bids approved, so we can get things going on that. Everything's looking good, so we're ready to go on that project. Tap Grant, the second time we submitted the construction documents last week, so we hope everything gets going on that. We're waiting to get a new updated version of the artist rendition of downtown Market Street, what it looks like. Soon as we get that, and we hope to get it in the next week or two, we'd like to schedule a meeting with the downtown merchants and whoever else would like to come, we'll do that at the community center, kind of give them an update, hopefully get a, some kind of construction schedule maybe for them on that. Right now we're looking at probably January to let them get through their Christmas season. So some updates on that. SRO Grant, we got our $225,000 this afternoon on it from the state, so that was, compared to the other state grants, that was a really, really simple one to get, so we're good on that. I think it's good on those projects. We have received bids for various projects listed below. Based on the analysis, bids submitted by our project architect, we would make the following recommendations for contracts award, with authorization, negotiate the final contract amount for each project. The bids listed are not to exceed cost. City Hall renovations, which actually is the police department downstairs, bathrooms, Thomas R Hicks Construction, $215,500. Fire Station 1 Training Tower demolition and reconstruction, Thomas Hicks Construction, $309,000. The only note on this, this was not the lowest bid, but due to a submittal error and the bond issue, it was rejected. Fire Station Number 2, which is an apparatus bay addition, also Thomas R Hicks Construction, $375,100.
Do we need to do these individually or all together?
Do them all together, yeah.
Hear a motion for approval?
So move.
Second. Motion and second, any further discussion? Roger, did you have something else?
That was it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And I think once awarded, we'll negotiate, especially on the number two, I think we can get it down some to meet actually what was the low bid. Finance, defer to Chris.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Monthly financial report concludes fiscal year 2023, so what this report shows, 100% of the year completed. We ended up having 128% of our original projected revenue and spent about 108% of the original expenditures, keeping in mind that we did a lot of capital projects this year and made some capital purchases from reserves. So we ended the year with a positive impact to our fund balance, which is always a good thing. There you'll see where the reserves ended up. If you have any questions on any particulars for the month, be happy to answer those questions. The local option sales tax, once again, came in 8% over where it came in the same month of last year. So with one more month to report for the fiscal year of 2023, we're almost 11% over where we're same time for fiscal year 2022, so that's a positive, that's a good trend. So that's what I have for you on the financial report.
You know, I was looking at the local option sales tax history and you look back three years ago, we're already over a million dollars over, we were three million with one more month to show, and so we'll be about close to 1.4. I think that's pretty, that's pretty impressive, that type of growth and it's still continuing. Any questions for Chris? Thanks Chris.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Thank you. Let's see, Public Works. We have received bids for the resurfacing projects listed. Based on a review and analysis of the bids, we would like to make the following recommendations. JD Yarnell Industrial Parkway connecting streets, Rogers Group Incorporated, $822,398.85. This is a contingent based on Anderson County government participating and paying 50% of this one. Mariner Point Drive, Rogers Group Incorporated, at $340,189.50.
Whoever makes the motion for the JD Yarnell, do we need to make that in contingent upon? We need to make that motion? Jimmy, you might make that motion.
Yeah, we'll do these separate.
Yeah, let's do a contingent.
So I make a motion on that first one there, JD Yarnell Industrial Parkway contingent upon Anderson County contributing 50% of that $822,398.85.
Hear motions?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion?
I have some. I have a comment or a question, City Manager. You and I have talked about this. I watched the last county commission meeting and to be quite honest, was not happy with some of the comments that were made on behalf of the city. I mean, it's not like we're coming with just hands out, give us money. You and I have talked about this and I think you, since, some county commissioners and county people have reached back out to you, we've always had a good relationship with Anderson County. Our agreements with the jail to respond there in event of emergency, our agreement to Anderson County High School. So I think some of them may have seemed like they didn't realize and understand that, but we've kind of got a unique, I guess, relationship with them and I just want to make sure that, what's your thoughts on that? I mean, in your conversation, you know, they get three times the amount of money from this industrial park. It started off as a county industrial park. We respond to EMS calls at the jail, we respond to any kind of fire EMS at Anderson County High School. So it's almost like, you know, we're good neighbors. Do you think, I mean, what's your conversation with them? Do you think it's, from that commission meeting to today, do you think that this will work?
I think so. I've had some talks with the county mayor and a couple of commissioners and I've got a meeting set up for this Thursday with the chairman of the Budget Committee and the county mayor also to discuss some of these things. But yes, for several years that I've been city manager, which is 13 years next month, we've, for most of those years, we've had an agreement with Anderson County High School that we're the- High School, that we're the, the first responders for both fire and EMS there, and also for the county jail, which both of them are not in the city of Clinton. So we provide that service to them. And, and as you said, this, probably back in the 60s, 70s, when this, this industrial park started, it was not in the city of Clinton. Of course, we did annex it, but even at that time, there was a mutual aid agreement that we provided police and fire to those industries that went in there, which I'm sure was a, a, a driving force to get industries there because they probably wouldn't come without some kind of fire and police protection.
That's reason probably was written down.
And there's always been, been an agreement. You know, we did this same agreement about six years ago, give or take a year, with I-75 Industrial Park, which was a joint venture between the county and, and ACEDA, which is in the county, and, and we split the cost of repaving it. We did not, when we paved Carden Farm Road, which was, we did it during the COVID years, COVID year 2020, we didn't ask the county to participate, which it wasn't as expensive as this one, but it's always been a joint venture. It's an industrial park, it's not a residential road. There's, to my knowledge, there's no houses that's on it. And, and you're correct, you know, the tax dollars that we make off of it, the county makes three times, and, and I can basically tell you, in 2022, the city made about $688,000 off the, the industries and businesses that are on J.D. Yarnell and a few of the small side streets that are off of it. So in that one year, you can say the county, you know, made three times that, basically.
Well, I'd just like to humbly ask, as a city councilman, this is just me, I don't know if I'm speaking on all council or not, but just me, I, I hope they partner with us. I mean, again, I think we've had great relationships. I didn't say what I said to be threatening in any manner, but I think we've stuck out the olive branch, and we've done what's supposed to be done. We want to be good neighbors. I've served on council. How long have we been on council?
Long time.
A long time. I mean, 11, 12 years, and it's always been a relate, good relationship. So I just, I'd like to urge county commission, if anybody's listening, that, you know, help us with this. Let's, let's continue this relationship.
And I think that's why we've.
Let's be neighbors.
I think that's why we tried to help them with the, the fire and first responders.
And we should.
To the high schools, we do Second Baptist Church also. We tried to be good neighbors and help them when we can.
Well, you know, when we first came on, we didn't have very good relationships with anybody. And that's one thing, I'm proud of this council and staff that, you know, not only county systems, I mean, of course, chamber, ACEDA, but also schools. I mean, like what we've done for the schools with Armory, they had, that was their, you know, the extra classes up there, a dollar a year, the football field, we're pretty much giving it to them. I mean, that's, that's, that's just being a good neighbor. But I will say, David and I had some good conversations at the fair last week, several of them. And you got to keep in mind, too, there's seven new ones that came on. So there's a lot of people that just have to be, first of all, they have to ask some questions, but also bring, be brought up to pace as far as what's our relationship? Why are they asking for this? It's like you said, we're just not asking them. It's, it's always been a partnership. It was, it was founded on a partnership, and we just, we wanted to continue that.
I think Robert McCamey said best, they could be asked, and let's go 75, 25.
Right.
Because that's how Robert, you know, felt about it.
Well, I just, I hope that they all. Well, and I think a little bit of the, that mayor, I don't want to say scared, but that brought a question up, we also put in the memo, we set this down to maybe have some kind of agreement in writing for future people, because it's been 23 years since we paved this street. Well, you know, the next 23 years, you know, Robert McCamey may not be a commissioner, but I know I probably won't be city manager, so there's going to be a lot of.
Oh, I'm alive.
Don't know that history. So we thought maybe there needs to be some kind of, you know, formal or just some kind of document that, that, you know, somebody knows a little bit of the history.
Right.
Of, of those agreements.
I think that's good. But we need to, I would, we need not dilly-daddle around, we need to get done with this because paving season is coming to a close.
And get it approved tonight, contingent on what county commits, because we need to get on their schedule so we can hopefully get it done before winter.
Probably need to do that on all our partnerships, just get some sort of formal documentation. But this is just so odd because it's such a long period of time, but you're right, I agree. And I think, I think staff's tried to do that. I think we maybe change the wording on that.
Well, I went back and looked at some of the old files. Doc Jones was mayor when the first original, some of the agreements were wrote. It's been many years.
So we have a second, first and second, and we have discussion, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, I want Rob to make this motion on this one, okay? Hear a motion? Hear a motion for approval?
Please, our brother-in-law, get on my.
Hear a motion for approval of Mariner Point Drive, Rogers Group, for $340,189.50. Motion, second by Mr. Houck, Houckmaker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Let me work on Quinn. He said he won't go. No, no. Give me a minute, and I'll work on him. Get him, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is that all you have?
That's all I've got.
Any additional questions for Roger? Anything else you want to bring up?
I think that's got it.
Okay, under second and final reading of ordinances, we have ordinance number 681 for the fiscal year 2022, '23 budget amendment. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McQuine.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrow.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Houckmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Mannan.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes, ordinance number 681 passes on second, final reading. Any old business before us?